Provide public comment today.
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and end your comment when the timer goes off. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with those persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online. Okay. In the room with us today is Kristen Lee. And when you, you can come to the table and have a seat and whenever you're ready, I'll begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kristen Lee. I am from Livonia, Wayne County, Michigan, and I serve as the Michigan Education Director for Citizens Defending Freedom. President and members of the board, I am here to say thank you for your service, thank you for your hard work, thank you for making these meetings public and transparent for all of stakeholders to be able to view and hear. Thank you also to the candidates, both before and the finalists today, for participating and putting themselves forward. We really appreciate the questions that you've asked today and I would urge, if possible, for more time to be given for the public, who, many of whom worked during the day, to be able to actually review these finalists and then offer feedback to you. If that's not possible, I at least want to urge you today to keep in mind, as far as selecting a candidate, those that really value open and transparent communication. As we know that our constitution in section 380 dot 10 says that it's the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. So those candidates that really put that paramount as far as listening to parents, I would advocate for that criteria to be very high in the selection process. And again, thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it for, for the good of all students of Michigan. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move to those online. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Beautiful. If you will please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
My name is Joanne Harris. I am calling from Dearborn, Michigan. To the president and the members of the board, as you move forward with the important task of selecting the next state superintendent, I urge you to keep one central focus at the heart of your decision: our students. It doesn't matter what side of the table one sits on. What matters is choosing a leader who consistently puts students first. Please consider a candidate who has a proven track record of making meaningful, positive changes within their district and who has demonstrated stability and commitment in their current role. Such leadership will provide Michigan with the vision, consistency, and dedication of our, that our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you, please state your name and where you're calling from and you may begin your three minutes.
Okay, my name is Adam and I'm calling from Birmingham, Michigan. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to make it there today, but I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. I am speaking on behalf of all Michigan children. Again, my name is Adam and I want to remind the board that Michigan deserves better than Lisa Coons as our new superintendent. I am deeply concerned by Lisa Coons' history as state superintendent. She left her most recent position as Virginia's state superintendent under suspicious circumstances. And it's been well documented that under her control, the department missed several important deadlines for reports to the state legislature, an issue she also had while heading Tennessee's Department of Education. Her history also shows she has not supported many of the agendas that are of high priority to our state board. Priorities such as improving the general health, including the mental health of our students, as well as the safety and wellness of our students. Nor does Lisa support diversity or the special needs of our underprivileged children. During her time in Virginia, as a direct result of her questionable work, there was a mass exodus of senior leadership at Virginia's Department of Education. The senior leaders not only left the department, but they left with critical institutional knowledge. The result of this was debilitating at the time when Virginia's education department was already struggling. We need to learn from her core leadership of the past and not watch it repeat itself here in Michigan. Our children deserve someone who is able to effectively lead, and this is not her. I'm sure you're aware right now, Lisa is scrambling to secure a position as state superintendent in both Michigan and Nevada. Yeah. She's also currently a finalist in Nevada for their lead role. Her interview, her interview with them is scheduled for later this week. Lisa's real passion doesn't lie in being Michigan's next state superintendent. She just wants to be any state superintendent. Michigan does not need somebody like her leading the state who isn't in line with the visions and goals of our state forward and has a proven inability to meet important deadlines that directly affect our education, support, and well-being of our young students. Our students of Michigan deserve better. Someone who has a deep knowledge of and respect for Michigan's educational system and somebody who shares the same passion for our children's future as we do. Michigan is already failing our students. Do not fail them further by selecting Lisa Coons for Michigan State Superintendent. Thank you again for my time, for your time.
Thank you caller. Mike, are there any other persons that have pre-registered for public comment today?
Nope, those are all the constituents today.
Thank you. This ends public participation.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And we will have Dr. Max McGee and Dr. Mike Ritchie to go over the next item for the board, which is deliberation of candidates for state superintendent of public instruction.
Great. Well, we want to thank you all for your really thoughtful questions and the follow-up questions, your careful attention to each of the candidates' presentations, and, and your, your attention to the answers that they gave to each and every interview question. So, to begin deliberations, we, we have a handout and following the last meeting, we were asked to put this information up on the screen for the public. So, this is the initial discussion. This is just a launch discussion. This is not, but we find in our process that this is really the, the best way to at least begin. Oh, thank you. Look at you. Okay. Thank you. I'm a, I'm a MacBook Pro guy, so I really appreciate Liz's expertise, Ms. Evans' expertise. So, th- this is what we're asking and encouraging to do. One of four things. A, who is your first choice to be the next state superintendent of public instruction, if you have one? B, if you do not have a clear first choice, who are your top two choices? C, if you do not have a clear first choice now, now being the operative word, who, if any of these three, would you like to bring back for another interview? D, you do not think any of the three finalists are qualified to serve as the next superintendent of public instruction? And if we have other processes and I think as we proceed, if, if D becomes a consensus. So, I can answer those now or later. But I think Dr. Pugh, at this point, we should probably go around the table and, and hear from each member. If they have, again, they can choose any one of the issues.
Absolutely. And I do just want to remind the public, those who are watching from afar, that this is an open process. The selection process, everything that, that we, our, any decision made will be done in this open session. So I do want to make that be known. And I do agree, Dr. McGee, that we are at the point where we can ask board members, and I don't know if you want us to just do round robin or if we want to have people jump in.
Let's just have people jump in then. Then we'll go round robin, make sure we get everybody's voice. Dr. Ritchie will take notes.
We don't have scores this time, so...
No, we don't.
They were all really, really close in my mind to scoring-wise. So this, this is so I can be recorded? I was trying to be secretive.
We have your fine.
I like Judy and Glenn, so I'll leave it at that.
That was your time, too?
Yeah.
I, I was appreciative of all the candidates. You know, again, I, I will say that. And definitely appreciative of anyone who dedicates their life to serving children. I was really pleased with the two candidates from Michigan. And it is refresh, refreshing to know that we have that, those educators that are at the helm of districts. I, I see the anticipation growing. My preference would be Dr. Maleko.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Lipton.
No, just, no, Dr.
Ms., I was, yeah, Ms., sorry. Representative.
Yeah, I do have a clear first choice, so, under option...
I'm sorry.
I do have a clear first choice and under option A, Dr. Maleko is my first choice.
Thank you. Ms. Dr. Robinson?
No, Doctor. So, I, like Dr. Pugh, I would like to thank not just the three people that joined us today, everyone that took the time to apply for the job, all the folks that came in for the first round of interviews. I think they are to be commended for showing that they, they care about our schools, our kids, our families. So, it, it takes a lot to, to go through that process. I do have a clear first choice and for me, it's Dr. Judy Walton.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you to all the candidates. At this point, I guess I would go with Dr. Maleko, but I'm still considering Judy Walton in the back of my head, so...
Okay. So, Dr. Maleko and considering Dr. Walton in the back of our head.
Right.
Tilly, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Snyder.
I said last week, I'm not happy with any of them. I think it's clear, none of them respect parents. They're willing to hide things from parents. They think that it's fine and, yeah, I mean, I don't think it's any surprise that I'm not a fan of any of them, actually.
But do you got any choices?
Nope.
D.
Go back to the drawing board.
And Ms. Snyder? And Ms. Tilly, one of you?
Oh, no. I'm breaking a tie if there is one. You guys pick your choice.
I, I want to thank each and every candidate that applied and that interviewed. It's never easy to put yourself out there. I think that politics sometimes get in the way, but I do think that everyone definitely cares about children and I appreciate their service. My choice would be Dr. Maleko. Judy Walton would be a close second.
Ms. Snyder, do you want to?
Yeah, it, the candidate, I think, like literally blew these interviews out of the water and brought to the table. An entry plan is like not even being considered by the majority. I'm, I'm just going to say that. And it's, it's shocking. Whoever you guys do choose as the majority of the board, please feel free to hijack her plan. It's an excellent plan. I'm still going to wait. This has been your process and it will be your selection. It's down to Judy and it's down to Glenn.
So let, let's hear those who had clear first choices, you know, provide the rationale for that, that choice.
Okay, everyone's looking at me. Well, I selected Dr. Glenn Maleko. Some of the concerns that I had are also some of the things that I appreciate. The fact that he has a vast number of, from all different corners of life and experiences that have shown up as references. I, I will state that that tells that he can come in and work with a diverse sector of groups and stakeholders. I have had the opportunity to speak with members of his staff who have appreciated his style of leading and his leadership style. I've heard from parents whose only comments or bad thing that I heard was that they, that he would be leaving their child and they weren't necessarily happy with that. Some of the concerns that I have around literacy and making sure that someone can come in and pick up the helm and run as fast as they can to address our literacy issues here in the state and pick up where Dr. Rice has left off. I, there, there were concerns that were there. I think that he understands, well, I know that he understands the importance of the laws that are in place now and I believe can help to move those laws forward. And having that experience that, that he has, I think that some of the children that he's worked with, he's done a lot of work around special education. He's talked to neighboring districts around helping them to move forward their special education programming. I believe that he can, the diversity that we see in the state goes beyond what we see in Dearborn, but I do believe, when I look at his experience and, and the group and the number of students, the differences in economic backgrounds of the students, I think it provides me with an understanding or clarity that he can help districts, though they may be districts that he's not had direct experience working in.
Thank you. Ms. Tilly, Ms. Lipton, anything else to add to that?
I really appreciated his, his, his passion around public education as an entity. I think that, you know, in a system, in a state where 90% of our students are going to public schools, I think having someone who's really an advocate and a believer in the power of public education is really important. I do think that because we do have a lot of complexity around governance and who has a say in public education in Michigan, I did appreciate the breadth of knowledge around who the players are. And also, I did appreciate the level of confidence that a diversity of stakeholders and players were willing to, you know, put their support on paper as part of his application packet.
Thank you. Ms. Tilly, did you want to add?
Let me start by saying, I think that each candidate had pros and cons. I don't think there is a perfect candidate or a perfect human being. I think, like, Board Member Lipton said, the stakeholder engagement piece is very critical in Michigan. And there's a lot of work that we have to do. And I think out of all of the candidates, because they're all qualified, and they're all highly qualified, I think out of all of the candidates, Dr. Maleko has the stakeholder piece that we need in order to move the needle here in Michigan. Thank you.
We'll, we'll save those a bit on the fence till later, but Dr. Robinson, would you like to speak on behalf of Dr. Walton?
I'm good.
Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Of the two individuals I, I spoke about, clearly Dr. Maleko in my mind is first, if I've got to, you know, rank them at this point. I agree with other board members that all of these individuals had clear strengths and, as all of us have, room for growth. The advantage Dr. Maleko has is that, and Ellen mentioned it, he has a breadth of support across the state of Michigan and I think is very cognizant of when he needs to go to get that, that information and that support. Because that's part of leadership also, because nobody's got all the answers. If you think that, you've got major issues. So to be able to know that I can call this person or from my experiences of this, et cetera, I'll be able to work through this particular issue. So at this point, I would support Dr. Maleko.
How about you, Senator Bullock?
Well, I'll say this has been fun. This is my first time, so this has been fun. I learned a lot. You know, I'm still the rookie on the All-Star team here.
All right.
Again, like, all of the candidates impressed me.
Yeah.
Especially the final seven, as we got to engage them about what they do. And, and I think all three of them, probably all seven of them, are capable.
Yeah.
It's Michigan. I mean, the reality is, I like when people want a job. Even, even when they're not, like, there are other people that could probably do the job, but do they want the job?
Right.
There are people that want the job. And so, I think where he edged it out for me, because we are at a, at a critical point, is his foothold in the state. Connections, relationships, understanding, his learning curve probably gave the photo finish.
Okay.
For me.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McMillan, Ms. Snyder, anything you wanted to add at this point?
He's deep. He's like, full.
Excuse me? Oh, come on. Let me ask.
Yeah, I mean, you can watch the interviews. He did not come nearly as prepared as Judy and Lisa. So, and I will be honest and forthright to the public that there was bias towards him in closed session. And I, I can't be specific about what that looks like because that's not the duty of honoring and protecting closed sessions. So, I didn't have to, though, because he showed up and he didn't have the knowledge of our statute. He didn't demonstrate it. I gave him two separate opportunities and two separate interviews to discuss staffing plans in the literacy law that we need implemented with fidelity. And he just literally didn't answer it the first time and we protected him from having to answer it the second time. And the reality is, when you've got two really strong candidates that very clearly set themselves apart and we don't give them support, that's, that's something that we're going to be accountable for as a board. To make a choice wouldn't make a difference, but ultimately, you know, he did not come prepared with the knowledge of state statute the way he needed to. And his answers were incredibly vague. They lacked substance. So, he's going to need like a real boot camp from people that I think want to give him the real boot camp he needs in order to lead the state.
Dr. Pugh?
I, I would just make sure that Dr. Robinson does not have any... Okay. Well, I say we call the vote.
It needs to be a motion, right?
I'm, I'm sorry. Make the, call the motion, yes.
I'll move.
Who do you move?
That, I'm not sure what the official language is, that we offered the position to Dr. Glenn Maleko for state superintendent of schools in Michigan.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I just, I'd like to say again, in, in my mind, all three of them, including Dr. Maleko, made it clear that not being transparent, being, hiding things from parents, being deceptive in my mind about their children and what they're being called at school, what bathrooms they're going to, these are things that are unacceptable and it, you know, all of them kind of tap dance around it, but when you got right down to it, none of them had a problem in the end with hiding things. And I think parents are, as we heard public comment, the primary educator of the children, not the state. And we need to make sure, and I would want to have a superintendent that understands that. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Is there any other discussion? Evans?
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly? Motion carries.
And, Dr. McGee, if you want to just discuss briefly next steps?
Absolutely. So, the, the next steps will involve finalizing a, a contract and also our, firm, as part of our contract, though it's, it's additional bore expenses, we brokered with Baker U-Banks, a third party, to do a, a deeper background check than is available via public records. So, that, they would do a financial background check, they would do court records and all that. So we could, we'll, we can have that conversation or your, your own HR department can do it. But that, I, I rewrote our contract earlier this week and that is annual, approximately $2,000. Again, we, we think that, that probably something to do, we recommend it to most boards, unless they have the full wherewithal to do that within themselves, which the State Department and, and Michigan government probably has. They can probably do that themselves without any additional expense. But the important part is to reach contract terms. That includes, of course, compensation, includes length of the first term, and then that would be approved, I think, scheduled for approval at the September 9th board meeting. At that point, once a contract is approved, we also provide, and this is included in our contract, the opportunity to meet with the superintendent and the board to develop performance goals, to develop a, a solid entry plan, knowledge, performance indicators, and that's usually about a two-hour session. Again, that would be done in an open session. So those are, those are the next steps from our perspective.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. McGee. Is there any questions for Dr. McGee or, or Ritchie? Okay, so September 9th, we will have an update on how the contract negotiations have gone and start date for, hopefully start date for the selected finalists. So... So, are there any board comments? We're at board member comments. Any board member comments?
So, I'll say this. In any organization, in any scenario, folks that get elected, it's always been the train of thought, from where I come from, is that no matter who, right, wrong, weak or strong, whoever the leader is, is selected, picked, appointed by virtue, it is our responsibility as the team to wrap ourselves around them, as well as ourselves, to make sure that we have success in what our ultimate goal is. Period. So, I just keep things simple. I'm just a shooter like that. So, in this process, and I said this the first day I was here, listening to conversations across the board, if it's possible to leave your personal politics at the door, and we meet in the middle about making sure we succeed for the children of this state, for the families of this state, then we will have a better outcome and a better process and better success moving forward for our school system. But if we continue to play the games, if we continue to play the antics, everything everybody says at this table can't always be wrong, right? It can't always be wrong. You know, the clock is right twice, all right? Even when it's broke. So, that doesn't mean that it's working, right? So, I think that we should come back with a new outlook, with our new leader, and making sure that we are all successful in how we move the state forward.
Right. And there will be an opportunity, I understand, for a vote on the contract on September 9th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, speaking of that, so our next meeting is September 9th at 9:30. The following meeting will be Tuesday, October 14th. And I am happy that I'm reading this, because the November meeting is Thursday, November 13th.
Yes.
So, I need to make sure that we make document that. Any other board comments?
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity, not only to thank the candidates, but to thank the staff here at MDE. They went above and beyond, making sure we were all fed. But more than that, giving us materials and being available to us for answering questions and just making it as comfortable as possible. So, behind every good leader, or with every good leader, is a dedicated staff. Thanks to senior staff for being here and listening so that you can move forward also. So, thank you.
Any other board comments?
I just wanted to give, and I also have those same sentiments. Thank you so much to all of the staff for everything that you did to help along with this process. I do want to give a shout-out. Yesterday, of course, was the first day of school for many districts in Michigan. I want to thank Dr. Robinson, at the Paul Robinson Malcolm X Academy for inviting me out. I had a great time with the students, greeting them and high-fiving them as they came into the school building.
It's a great space.
I had a... It is a great space. I had a great time with them as they got the students together in assembly, and everybody was excited, and it was a great morning. And I also want to give a shout-out to Oak Park Public Schools, which was my next stop yesterday morning. So, I... Welcome back to school, Michigan.
It's a good day when you see schools.
Yes.
And I just want to add to thanking staff and our search consultants, but especially the staff who have really helped us keep things together and keep things moving. I know that we're at a place that we never thought that we would have been at. We did not think that we would be able to move at the speed that we've been able to move at, and doing it in a very thoughtful, meticulous way. And so, I thank board members for your cooperation. Again, we come from different angles, different thought processes, but we were able to move this forward, which speaks volumes, again, about how we, at this board table, center children. We've been asking candidates about that. But the way that we've been able to move forward does speak volumes to your commitment to children. We have said it, can't say it enough, appreciation for those who do this work around the state, who will put themselves on the line to come before us and be grilled for the sake of moving forward an agenda of putting our children on the best trajectory, our 1.4 million schoolchildren on the best trajectory forward. So, we thank all of the finalists, all those who applied. And as I think, as Board Member Tilly said, there is no perfect person. There was no perfect candidate. To Board Member Bullock, it is up to us to make sure that whomever sits in this seat, that we ensure that they are set up in the best way possible so that they can care for our children. There's a lot that's going on in the world that can harm our children as it relates to education policy. And so, there is only time for us to support the person who will be in this role. And so, I thank you all. And it is now 5:06. 5:06. And we are adjourned.